From Milestones to Mask, we continue on in Forney ISD tonight. So, let's move on then with our next item, which will be our reports. Under Reports, our first one is going to be presented by Dr. Terry, as he's making his way back around to the podium. 5A is our Diversity and Inclusion Report. Dr. Terry, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you very much. So, let me see if I can, excuse me, one second here. See if I can get us going again. All right, well, thank you so much, Mr. Ferris and Board. We are very excited, obviously, to celebrate our first police department. But we're also excited to bring to you tonight a new group of people that have been working on some leadership opportunities and really to discuss cultural diversity and inclusion throughout our school district and our Forney family. I'm just going to kind of open up and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sterling to introduce our team, but also to share with you our next steps with our Forney family here. And I'm just going to start by giving you a little background of how we got to today. We are, obviously, in a very challenging world that we're living in. It is very much divisive in so many ways right now. It is very polarized in a lot of our opinions and the approaches that we have towards each other. And in early June, we began to examine ourselves as a school district and begin to look at, you know, our Forney family and how the world around us is being extremely divisive. And that really wasn't okay here at home. And so, I called a few people in and they are part of this committee tonight and very proud of the work that they have already done to begin to tackle and be proactive to ensure that our Forney family stays together. And one of the things that we began to examine is two things, and it really comes from one key word, and that is understanding. And so, as we began to embark on really looking at diversity and inclusion throughout our Forney family, I've challenged each of our staff members and our leadership team to really focus on one word: understanding. And understanding in two different areas. Number one, understanding others and beginning to seek to understand the perspectives of others, the thoughts of others, the feelings of others, the experience of others. But even more importantly, the understanding of ourselves. And so, we've taken a lot of time to also begin to examine some of the biases that we may have. And Flip Flip, and who I know we engage a lot with, says one thing about an organization, and that is, an organization can only rise above the constraints of its leadership. And so, as one of the leaders of this school district, I took that to heart and I needed to call in some others to help me to understand, as the leader of this school district, if I had any biases or blinders on that were holding this district and this community back. And I am so proud of the information and the feedback that they gave and the direction that we are headed as a school district when it comes to understanding each other and ourselves. And so, I'm going to, I've asked Ron Sterling to take the leadership role in this committee this year, and we've already started with our leadership team on taking a small step forward that will lead to even greater things, that is a long-term plan, and that is to ensure the Forney family stays the Forney family. And so, Ron, I'm going to turn it over to you and let you introduce our team as well as kind of our next steps together.
Thank you, Dr. Terry, and thank you, School Board, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Dr. Terry summed it up perfectly. We, of course, know the day and age we're living in. We are in turmoil as a country. And so, he did challenge all of us as a school district, and of course, I'm extremely honored to be in this position to have a platform. I'll be quite honest with you, probably one of the more nerve-wracking things in 20-plus years of education that I've had to tackle. It's an emotional topic. It's a hot topic for many. First thing that he talks about is that he listens to us. And of course, if I at this time can introduce our committee members, come on in, y'all can't hide. There's seats available. They're very modest, very shy, but these are our central core members of our Cultural Diversity Committee. Of course, our goal, of course, we're a very large district. This is just the beginning phase of it. Our goal and our plan and kind of the term we've taken on is to cast a broader net, creating a restorative ecosystem, which branches out further than just the school district. So, of course, we are faced in challenge, we all are. So, one of the things that we did ask, of course, by no means were we here to persecute or shame anyone. We all come from different experiences, different walks of life, and again, the key term we came away with was understanding and listening. So, many of the people, many of our district leadership you see in here attended a training we had on July 22nd. Honored, of course, to partner with IDRA, Dr. Paula Johnson, that's Intercultural Development and Research Association. I think I got it right, Ross. So, Dr. Paula Johnson, of course, came in and hosted a session for us, talking about implicit bias that we all face, and of course, attacking the word bias. And one of her key phrases that she says, "We can't take bias as a dirty four-letter word." It's something that we all have to encounter, we all are faced with in some point of our lives. So, again, we're not going to bury our heads in the sand as a community, as a school district. I applaud Dr. Terry and his cabinet for taking this on. Another thing that we challenged him with, and I appreciate him allowing us to challenge him in the school district as well as the cabinet, is that we did not want this to be a checkoff box. We didn't want this to be a training we received at the beginning of the year, and there was no follow-up. We wanted to talk about long-range planning. And so, I'm excited to partner with Dr. Paula Johnson, IDRA. Extremely blessed to continue our partnership with Life A New. Last year, if you all know, on some of our campuses, we did pilot restorative practices with great success. So, I'm extremely pleased and blessed to continue that partnership as we continue. So, more of our next steps moving forward, of course, is to develop a mission statement to keep us focused, to keep us on the straight and narrow. And so, this committee will be meeting periodically throughout the course of the year, just to come up with plans. And then, of course, this committee branching out and representing their respective campuses will go and continue to meet with our administrators and our teachers and staff. So, again, this is just the beginning phase of it. I'm extremely blessed and honored to have this platform, to be in this position, and I just applaud Dr. Terry and the cabinet, and of course, School Board, for allowing us this opportunity. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ron. So, I'd be happy to take any questions, but really, what this is about is just to introduce you to an awesome team that's going to take us another step forward in this community. And tomorrow, we will be sending out a survey to invite some of our community to help participate in our committee that we'll be putting together this fall. And we're really looking at multiple layers and multiple levels to this, from the students to our staff, to our community, as well as, you know, what our curriculum looks like in the future and beginning to ensure that we examine all areas of our educational setting. So, thank you guys so much for your work, but open it up to any questions that the Board may have.
Any questions from the Board? I don't think we have any. Thank you, guys, for being willing to serve and giving up your time this summer. In spite of all the craziness going on, thank you for participating in something else.
Very good.
Yeah.
Great. Can we commemorate this event as well, because this is a great first step together? So, Board, if you'd rise back to your little separation dots that you have in front of you, and we'll step out in front as well, and once you get to your dot, you can remove your mask. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming, and once again, thank you for taking time to have these courageous conversations and lead us forward as a district. So, we appreciate y'all very much. Good night. We'll move on then to Item 5B, which will be our monthly financial report. Mr. John Chase, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As the Boards are aware, our fiscal year ended on June 30th, and tonight, we're talking about the month ending, June 30, and the activity that we've had this entire year. So, just to start off with, we had 18, 18.5 million dollars in revenue for the month, and that's pretty high. One of the reasons for that is, as you know, in the background memo that you get every month, in the month of June, we actually recognize the revenue that we actually collect in July and August for the fiscal year, for the student attendance money that we get from the state. It's all recorded as revenue because it's earned at that point in our fiscal year. So, we'll actually get probably the majority of that in July and August. It hasn't all been collected yet, but its revenue is in our accounting records at this point. Moving on to the expenditures, it's 5.1 million for the month. Total revenue for the year was 117.2 million, or 100% of the amount estimated, and total expenditures was 95.7 million, or 91% of the amount appropriated. Now, I know 91% sounds pretty low, and it is. Would point out, we had several construction projects going on this summer, as you well know, and we had, some of that was funded with maintenance tax notes, and a lot of that was not completed by June 30th. And so, we have a fair amount of our fund balance that that will roll into, that we'll be restricting for the use of construction, as well as, we had some other projects like fire panels and some things like that, that we did not complete by the time June 30 was ended either. And so, you know, all told, I think there will be about 5.8 million, if my memory serves me correctly, that will be either restricting or assigning for projects that weren't completed as of the fiscal year end. But also, you know, when you look at the revenues and you compare that to the expenditures, you can see that's about, you know, 20, a little over $20 million in difference, and we were projecting a $12 million surplus this year. 6.8 million of that was actually an underpayment from the prior year, as you know. And then, we had originally planned on doing those construction projects out of our current operating funds, and we decided to borrow the money on tax notes. We got a really good interest rate on that and saved the cash flow for future use. And so, I know, again, that 91% of the budget being expended is, it seems like a fairly low number, but there's lots of good reasons why that percentage is that low, and that fund balance is as high as it's going to be, which, I mean, it's a good problem to have, but, you know, there's obviously a delicate balance about how much fund balance is enough. And I think we're at a good spot right now. As you know, we also have some debt that we can continue paying off early, and we could earmark some of this fund balance in the general fund for that purpose in the future, if you'd like. But certainly, several things that we could do with it. I think that represents, when it's all said and done, after you strip out the assigned fund balance and restricted fund balance, we'll have about $40 million of unassigned fund balance, which is about lower four months of operating expenses. Moving on to debt service side, we've got 25 point, or $146,000 we collected in interest or property taxes for the month. We had $1,000 that we spent for collecting agent, or paying agent fees. Year-to-date revenue recognized is 25.3 million, or 100% of the amount estimated, and year-to-date expenditures was 21.2 million, or 100% of the amount appropriated. No surprises here. This fund, as you know, has been pretty well. All the activity has occurred in that as, pretty much as of February, when we made our interest payments. So, I think when it's all said and done, we make our August payment this year, we'll have about $6.5 million left in our fund balance in debt service, which is, it's a pretty good, a pretty good place to be. It's about 25% of our annual debt service, which is what the rating agencies, they like to see, about that much in your fund balance, to account for, you know, property value fluctuations and things like that over time. And so, and finally, the cash investments on hand at the end of June, it totaled 126.7 or 0.8 million. A lot of that was for capital project funds that we currently have underway. So, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Do you have any questions from the Board? Dr. Terry?
Yes, sir.
Moving on then to 5C, Quarterly Investment Report. Mr. Chase?
So, as we just saw, we had 127.8 million in cash at the end of June. That money was on deposit either at our local depository, Citibank, or in one of three investment pool options. The interest rate that we earned in the quarter was as low as 0.3% and as high as 0.8%. And as you know, if you remember in the past quarters, it's been a little higher than that with the economy and the federal economy being shut down for a period of time, and there's some easing of the monetary policy at the federal level. The federal funds rate is near zero now, and so, you can expect those rates to come down even further than that in the next quarter. So, there's not going to be a whole lot of interest income to be had for this next year until those federal funds rates actually start back up on the rise. So, that being said, for the quarter, we had $282,000 of interest income for the month, and that's the quarterly investment report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any further questions? Is there any here or none? Moving on then to 5D, our Fourth Quarter Tax Collection Report.
Your tax collection report was included in your board book for review tonight, however, rather than me just to kind of go over that report, which it's pretty standard, our collection percentages are pretty well in line with where we would be, expect to be at this same point in time in the year. But tonight, we have Purdue Brandon, and as you know, they are our delinquent tax collection attorneys. We have Elizabeth Calvo and Ben Parsons here tonight to share with you their report for the year and things, they've got some good information to share with us. Elizabeth?
Good evening, President Ferris, Board, Dr. Terry. As we all know, this year has been anything but ordinary, and we've all had to deal with challenges, and our challenge was to collect delinquent property taxes during a global pandemic. So, that was challenging. From the beginning, when this all started in March of this year, we've been in constant contact with Mr. Chase to get feedback from the district of how exactly the district wanted us to proceed, to reach out to these delinquent taxpayers, to work with them, to provide more flexibility, more payment options, more time so that they could get their own personal challenges in order before we would continue to reach out to them. And I think we came up with a pretty good plan of how we wanted to proceed and how to work with our Forney family to provide those, that needed more time, that additional time. Ben Parsons, fellow attorney, is going to be the one doing the report this evening. So, with that, I will give it over to him.
Good evening, President Ferris, Dr. Terry, other members of the Board. It's my pleasure to assist in presenting this report this evening. I'm going to go on to the first, to the next page here, and this is discussing our 2018 tax year. And just to discuss the tax year calendar, taxes are delinquent on February 1st, and on April 1st, there's business, personal, property accounts that are turned over for collections. And then, on July 1st, those remaining accounts are then turned over to our firm for collections. What this chart is showing is taxes that were collected before accounts were turned over to our firm, and that is the 98.62% number you see up there. And for the 2018 taxes that were turned over to us, that was 1.38% of the remaining taxes, and it's a little silver sliver you see up there, and that's the amount of taxes that were sent over to our, turned over to our law firm for collections. Moving on to the next page. This chart shows a full year of collections for the 2018 taxes. Of the 1.38% of taxes that I discussed on the previous slide, out of that balance, we collected $477,100 and $100, and the remaining balance is $253,754. And there are also adjustments for the delinquent taxes in the amount of $128,086. Moving on to the next slide. Now, this chart is showing a breakdown of every single dollar that was turned over to our firm for collections for the 2018 tax year. The action pending accounts are the accounts that were collected through phone calls to taxpayers, mailing letters, and processing new lawsuits. And once we work through those action pending accounts, we then move these accounts to litigation, where we have a majority of those accounts, as you can see on the chart. There are also accounts that are in bankruptcy, in deferral, action pending, like I stated earlier, in bad address, and also accounts that are uncollectible. Moving on to the next slide. This chart is showing the 2019 tax year collections, and so, it's showing that for the 2019 tax year, 98.64% of those taxes were collected before being turned over to our law firm. And as you can see, you have very great taxpayers. And for the 2019 tax year, 1.36% of those taxes were turned over to our firm as of July 1 of this year. I'm going to move on to the next slide now. So, here at Purdue Brandon, we proceed with a customized collection process for the Forney family. We utilize our personal approach. When we talk with the taxpayers, we're very proactive with our phone and letter campaigns. We have a site visit program, and prior to COVID-19, I personally visited more than 22 businesses to discuss getting these taxes paid, and that amount was totaling $61,639. When we deem it safe with the district's consent, we will look to restart our site visit program again. And as Elizabeth Calvo mentioned earlier, that's something we work closely with Mr. Chase and the administration on. We work to collect your taxes as quickly as possible. We know the district needs these tax dollars. Moving on to the next page. We continue to be engaged community partners in the Forney community. We've been proud sponsors of the Forney ISD Christmas Open House. We've also participated in sponsoring the Clay Shoe, the Casino Night, and we're proud and active members of the Forney Chamber of Commerce. And despite these challenges that we're facing with COVID-19 right now, we continue to look for ways to partner up with the Forney family and the Forney community. I'm going to move on to the next page right now. And as your delinquent tax attorneys, we're committed to the Forney ISD. We, like I said earlier, we have a customized collection plan. We're fair and compassionate with our approach. We're personable. We have proactive phone and letter campaigns, and we're fast and efficient, and we make sure we promote a positive public perception and reputation for the school district. Once again, thank you for allowing our law firm the opportunity to present this report to the district, and at this time, I'll open up the floor for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions from the Board? Is there any here or none? Dr. Terry, any comments?
Yeah, do you mind, just a few comments, Mr. Ferris? Thank you. Just so appreciative of the partnership with Purdue Brandon, and, you know, it's Elizabeth and Ben to us, and they're just such good partners, like you saw on the screen, not only with our school district and supporting programs, also with our community and the Chamber of Commerce. And I just, I have to comment on one thing, and that was, you know, through the challenging times this spring, tax collecting is a difficult business in the middle of a pandemic and with the financial constraints, and their compassionate approach to understanding some of the needs of our community and taking a very light hand, but also still continuing to do their job for us, was, is very appreciated by, I know, our team and our Board. So, I just wanted to say thank you. Thanks for the continued partnership and your work here in Forney ISD.
Thank you, Dr. Terry.
I would like to say thank you again, too. I have the opportunity of seeing them at different events around the county and different things, always proud to call them one of our partners, so thank you for all you do for our Forney family.
Thank you, President Ferris.
Well, moving on then to Item 5E, District Operations Report. Dr. Terry, I believe I'll turn this over to you and Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris and Board, and we have got a little bit of an update on our back-school operations. Obviously, as of today, we're going to share with you our plan. That's been kind of our phrase, and as of today, we do have a few new updates for you as we prepare, and we are so excited to get our kids back. And honestly, if it's a face-to-face setting that they're in, or a virtual setting that they're in, we're just excited to interact with our students again. And so, as you are aware, we have two different options that we're offering to our families, and tonight is the night. At 11:59, I know our principals are eagerly awaiting to get data and numbers on who has selected the face-to-face option, the onsite option, or our virtual option, so that they can begin to plan and prepare for our return on August 17. There were some new developments, I think, over the past week or two through the Attorney General and his opinions, just so that everyone is aware, that did not affect our trajectory as a school district. We have really been steadily moving towards the plan that we have in place, and it really hasn't wavered, and I'm proud to say that, that our team has done a great job of working long hours to get this prepared for the students and staff to return. So, tonight, we are going to give you a few updates. I'm going to ask our cabinet to just walk through one by one, and I think Mr. Gier has got some operational updates from Human Services Team, and as well as our UIL updates, we did receive some new guidance there as well, I think. Mr. Gier?
Thank you, Dr. Terry. And going to give you a little bit about transportation update and kind of the protocol that we put in place. And before I begin, I want to say thank you for the approval of 10 buses, and we've got those in already, and so, that did help us in trying to set these procedures for us. But obviously, we're going to run our buses at regular capacity, and where social distancing is not probably going to be feasible. We have put some things in place that we think will help us. We're asking all students to wear masks on the bus. We have provided bus drivers our monitors with face shields and gloves if necessary to help students that need assistance. There's protocols set up for even at the bus stop about, you know, obviously encouraging them to social distance. The drivers have been trained. We went through PD last week, about three days, about how to load students, going from back to front, and then unloading from front to back. So, with some of these things that we've done, but one of the most exciting things, I think, really was one of those things that I never, I don't believe in luck, but I believe, obviously, somebody's looking out after us, but we started working on this SmartTag system about a year ago. And what it allows us to do, each student that rides the bus will have an ID badge that has that low frequency RFID frequency in the badge itself. So, what it allows us to do, several things, the drivers know exactly if that student's supposed to be on that bus, there's no question, because it's already programmed in there. The route's already programmed in a little smart tablet. And also, the parents can actually have an app on their mobile phone that allows them to track the bus, not the card itself, but the bus, once a student logs in. So, the parent actually gets information about the time they logged into the bus and the time they log off the bus. The campus has a portal on a computer as well, where they can track all the buses from their campus. So, it's pretty, it's pretty neat, and we're really excited about that. And so, we're in the process of getting everything implemented, getting our drivers trained, and we're really excited about that. The last thing, obviously, I meant to mention while I was talking about bus protocol. We have bought some equipment for every bus after each route, in between routes, every time that runs with kids on it will be deep cleaned and sanitized prior to moving out for the next run. So, if there's any questions about transportation or SmartTag, I'd be glad to answer those. Okay, good. Well, I'll turn this over now to Ms. Stacy Brown, our Director of Health and Wellness. She's going to talk to you a little bit about health and safety.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I just want to say I'm excited. I'm just so excited. We have been working so hard, all of the administration, all department heads. We have been working hard as a team all summer, trying to understand the ever-changing CDC recommendations, TEA, trying to follow up with that. Oh, nope, something's changed. But like Dr. Terry said, we've kind of been right on it every step of the way. But like Dr. Terry said, we've kind of been right on it every step of the way. So I'm just excited to have everybody come back to school. I think we've got some really great processes in place. We met with, or I met with all of the nurses and all the health service staff on Friday to kind of help them get started with their first day back with all their staff today. And I've heard some really great things. So we've got processes in place from prevention of pre-screening, all of our staff coming in, to how we might identify some situations and isolate those and get those home, to notifications and some mitigation strategies that we can use throughout the day. So we are ready up for the challenge to help guide and support all of our staff and students through this interesting time, but ready to get back to some sense of normalcy for our community as well. So I'd be welcome to answer any questions on health and wellness. Okay, then I am going to turn it over to our Athletic Department to give you some updates
Thanks, Dr. Terry, members of the board. We, just like everybody in the school business, we have, I'm proud of many, many of our coaches and athletic staff employees who've put countless hours of planning into everything we've done throughout the summer, the phase that we're in now, which is about Phase Four or Five of our operations. And then as we plan for the beginning of the school year, I could probably expound at great length, at least twenty, thirty minutes, on all of the detail of the plan that we have. I will, I think I've got two minutes is what Rick told me. So, but throughout that plan, you can see the wisdom and experience of my esteemed colleague, Coach O, interlaced throughout all the things we do. Lots of other folks have contributed too. But I'm going to ask her to speak to you for just a moment on kind of where we've been this summer.
Thanks, Coach. Good evening. I'll be brief. We just started, as Coach Weaver said, Phase Four of our Summer Strength and Conditioning Program. We started on June eighth. We've had about five hundred kids a day coming in to workout. We've been extremely, extremely proud of our coaches, our secretaries, our coordinators, and especially our athletic coordinators, because they are the ones overseeing those workouts and making sure that we're staying in compliance. We will continue to have our strength and conditioning with our skills development going into the start of the school year. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Coach.
You guys can see on that slide, that's just a glazing. But essentially, we've gone through four or five phases. I mean, we started with just upperclassmen. We phased into lowerclassmen. We phased into junior high kids. We took strength and conditioning workouts and phased those into some skills work with the kids we already had in our system. We've expanded that this week to kids that were outside the strength and conditioning system, really trying to incrementally bring them in and train them in small groups so that we could make, our goal really has been two things. We've talked about this with our coaches throughout, to maintain safety standards that are over and above the UIL guidelines and the TEA standards that we're given. We're trying to give kids as much as we can, as close as we can, the safest place they can go outside of their own homes. And I feel like our trainers and our coaching staff truly have accomplished that. It's pretty amazing to see the operation that they've had throughout the summer. We do have UIL, you know, we've gone through periods where we went weeks without any detail, you know, and we're essentially adjusting to our own experiences. And then we've had weeks where we had two or three revisions of plans to deal with and apply to what we do. So, but we do have start dates. We know we're going to start school. We know we're going to take what we're doing, which is working, and apply it to an in-school environment where we've got a lot more kids and a lot more spaces that we're working in. We have start dates for practice now for volleyball and football. We've got start dates for games for those. We've got team tennis ready to get started, cross-country. Swim and dive will also begin practice, although they have competitions a little bit later. We've got some kind of different, but a little bit exciting, what we're going to do with our crowds and our spectators at events. Obviously, we have to have fifty percent or less capacity with our venues throughout the district. So some of those, like Citibank Stadium, fifty percent capacity, still a lot of people. You're still, you know, forty-five hundred, five thousand people. But then we've got some subvarsity gyms where our capacity might be seventy-five people, right, for that gym. Every other row has to be closed down by rule. So we're putting some things together so that we can manage and control the number of people that come in, get the right people in, get them in the right seats, and let them have a safer environment as we can as well. We are going to have a paperless, ticketless box office experience, really. People are going to buy their tickets online. We're not going to have to exchange any tickets or any cash. We're not going to have any of those exchanges at the gate. Essentially, people are going to be able to purchase a ticket with a device. We scan it with a device. It's a touchless entry, make it very easy and safe for everyone as much as we can. And then they'll know they have, we'll know our capacity, we'll know when we're getting, what percentage of our capacity we've reached, and they'll know they have a seat. It's a guaranteed seat. So they don't show up and stand in line and realize, oh, so we ran out of capacity. So we're working with a group called Hometown Ticketing on that. Another exciting thing is that the UIL has lessened, or they've released us to be able to livestream varsity football, which is the first time ever because UIL's always held the rights to varsity football on Friday nights. So now we're going to be able to livestream and working with our people that are already in place at the stadium, working with sportsgram.net, who we've had, you know, I don't know, fifteen to twenty years of experience with. Both of our crews that have already been doing an audio broadcast, we're going to expand that into video. So some exciting things there is we were able to broadcast live football to folks at home. We're working on volleyball, too. May be able to pull that off and get some livestreamed gym events as well. So anyway, we've got a pretty comprehensive plan for spectators that is still a little bit in the works, a very comprehensive plan for our kids and our coaches as we begin the school year, and a really successful plan throughout the summer. It's just some general standards there, but obviously, there are many, many more layers than that, and we've got a lot of folks who are very diligently working on the campuses. Any questions, I'll be happy to address. Of course, you guys can ask them anytime, of course. Okay. Hope you see our kids working hard on a campus near you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and move into the technology update. Neil forgot to mention that he conned me into getting Wi-Fi to the gates at the stadium. He's been begging me for it, didn't even give me props for it. So we'll talk about that later. Just a quick update on technology for COVID. We did get our first set of teacher Chromebooks in, and we've been told that we're going to be the only school district in the nation to get all of our order in. It's backordered in most places to October. So one of our vendors, our vendor that we use is actually a Forni resident and a Forni parent, and he's helping us out. And so we're in great shape there. We love him. So we also, you know, as Rick said, God takes care of us. We had got new Chromebooks for our students, and as you know, we passed a lot of those out to our third graders when COVID started, and we still have about a little over two thousand of those that we can get to the hands of any K-three student who chooses to be virtual. They're not the best machines, but they work. And that will allow those students to have Chromebooks at home if they choose a virtual path. Also, we do have some hotspots. And once again, they're saying right now that every day you wait to order these types of devices, you're delayed two weeks. So it just gets further and further away for anyone to get hotspots, Chromebooks, anything like that. So we're very lucky that we were well-prepared. So we do have those for any family that doesn't need them. It is fairly limited, and I can't get any more in for a really long time. So we do have some to help out. And then we've actually launched a new help desk system where students and staff can enter tickets. It's actually attached to our mobile app as well. So if their Chromebook's not working and they're at home, they can submit a ticket even on their phone and get immediate help from our tech team. This summer, I think, we've already gone through about three thousand tickets through that system. So it's been a busy summer for my guys, and they're doing an awesome job. And then the last thing is, we are analyzing different software and hardware to help assist our teachers who are both face-to-face and virtual for this upcoming school year. So we're trying to find software to help with testing requirements at home and video cameras for our teachers and that type of thing. So hopefully, we'll be getting some things that can help our teachers as well. And that's pretty much all I have on an update. Any questions? I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Kristen for Communications.
Hi. So for our communications, we did undergo a website update this summer that was, we usually do that every July anyways, but we, as you know, we added a learning options section on our website, and we're continually updating that, adding FAQs in every week as we get new information. In addition, our mobile app underwent an update as well. We've added some things like the tech ticket, some quick icons for information that people are really looking for right now. So we often go in and refresh that depending on what the season is, if it's back-to-school season, or if there's something that's a really hot topic for our community. We've really pushed a download on our mobile app out to our community. It's so important. With new families coming in, they may not necessarily be enrolled yet and in our system, so they don't always get the emails and phone calls. From what I'm hearing, I think people are relieved that today's August third, and they may not be getting a phone call or email to do their commitment form tonight. But for those that are new to the community, the great thing about our mobile app is whether you're in our email system or not as a parent, if you've downloaded our mobile app, you're going to get those notifications through a push notice. So we've really asked if they're new to the community that they go this route until they get in our system. In addition, we just went through a training with all of our new staff and some refreshers as well, with some returning staff, with social media posts and training. We still want to promote all the great things that our district is doing, but certainly it's going to look a little bit differently this year. So we're working with them to make sure that we're assisting them as they do that. Along with the new tech ticket system, internally, there's also a communications tab in that ticket system. So our staff are able to go in and request help posting things or sending out information, or if they just need help with their communications on their campus as well. And then our community partnerships and marketing, we've continued that, and we really ramped up. This was our second annual Back-to-School Resource Fair on Saturday. We gave out over seven hundred, I think it was seven hundred and forty-one backpacks, but we still did have a lot of needs in our community. So we're continuing to take in donations, and we're getting ready to send out another round this week. And so we're kind of doing that individually now out through our campuses and through Dana in our partnerships office. We're also continuing to share things in our community that are resources, like the Caravan Shot Clinic. We have our nonprofit flyers that we distribute that come through when we have a food truck that comes, and a refrigerated food truck that comes to St. John's. So we want to share those resources with our families as we know they're still needed. And then we're also continuing to develop new videos as the year goes on. We've worked with Stacy's office to work on. We're about to enroll some how to safely put on your face mask, how to hand wash, and things like that. So we'll have videos like that, as well as our kids start back, that they'll be able to get that information in their hands that will be educational as well. So any questions I can answer about communications? All right, then I think it's Judy.
I'll give you a little bit of update, Dr. Terry, Mr. Ferris, and school board members, on what Learner Services has been doing and kind of what's coming up really for the next school year. So let's start off with our professional learning department. This is a big kudos to Stormy and Leslie Raider and their team. New teacher induction brought a really new challenge this year with COVID. When you induct a few hundred people, how do you keep them safe? How do you keep them distant? So we actually used three locations this year, which means we had to take turns and juggle. So they had to create really a complicated schedule to have teachers in different locations and then have those of us who have parts to teach constantly rotating throughout the week long. But they pulled it off. It's pretty amazing. And then they've also planned a lot of upcoming PD, and this is just a tiny snip of what's in Edugence, but during Diamond Week, our teachers have a great opportunity, new and returning teachers, to say, I need to have a refresher on, I need more help with. So they've designed hundreds of hours of training coming up for our new staff members. And so a big shout out to them for both what they've done and really what is still to come, not only in Diamond Week, but throughout the year. And then our next big giant topic is in terms of virtual learning. My team can't work without Kim Worsak's team and the Instructional Technology Team. And so we've had a few people, Stacy Joseph and Sherri Watson, really step up in our Learning Specialists, to come together and create a really well-balanced learning plan for all of our students. So to get our virtual teachers a step ahead, they have preloaded three weeks of virtual content in all the subjects listed there through eighth grade. So that's our K-eight, our tested subjects of ELAR and math, and tested science and social studies, so that when we identify these teachers, which will happen very close to when school starts, their first three weeks, many of their lesson and teach pieces are front-loaded because they would have to pick up this mantle and then keep it going. But our Learning Specialists are coordinating a really, really big effort to get a lot of information, take our future-ready curriculum, and organize it in such a way that we can really meet the needs of our students and help our teachers. So along with Stacy Joseph and some help from some of our principals and teachers, we've created a really nice, consistent learning platform for all of our families. Remember, when we started this a while back, we had no idea how many are going to go virtual, how many are going to go face-to-face, who might have to go out for just a short period of time, who might go out for a long time. So we've organized things by quarter and then by week and then by day, so that our learning plan aligns with the plan that Sandy Whitley will submit for us. But then we can help get our, do what we need to to get attendance recorded for each child who is, whether they're virtual or here. And so it's very organized. And once you go into the week, then the week is outlined with everybody having day-to-day. So if you have kids in multiple campuses, you'll see the same canvas page for all of your students, whether they're in Kinder or in twelfth grade. They'll have this common format, which will really help our families with multiple students or even some of the blended families. They have kids in multiple campuses on our blended families. So a nice cohesive pattern to really help. And then you can see every week, I just picked a little Kinder one, we'll start with an overview. So you have to realize, these young grades, Kinder parents are reading this, and so they need to know what a child has to do. So this week, we'll be becoming a reader and a writer after completing this week's activity. So there's a lot of parent-friendly language throughout our younger grades. So we are really fast and furiously trying to induct new teachers, prepare for new planning, and build this fantastic learning system. We're also making sure our assessments are consistent. We want real good consistency between at-home and our face-to-face onsite kids. And so not only do we have learning checks, but we're creating really valid, common-formative assessments. And what I really like about what our learning team has done, notice in the boxes, here's the face-to-face directions and here's the virtual direction. Because we're going to have virtual teachers and we're going to have face-to-face teachers, but we're going to have a cohesive system. So we're checking students' progress through the curriculum in a consistent format. And then there's a rubric created so that teachers, doesn't matter if they're virtual or face-to-face, we're grading these the same way, but taking out the multiple choice. Because if I asked a kid to do this lesson and really understand internal and external traits of a character, and I do multiple choice, there's a high likelihood that kids are just guessing on these. But now, these are little handwritten things that really, you'll know if a kid knows it or not. So a lot of work is being done to appropriately assess our students, to really identify. And they're writing these through all of our grade levels, I think through algebra. So we'll be able to really track a kid's true learning, not just in a multiple choice, which is preparing us for the new way Star is going to assess us in a couple of years. They're going to move away from multiple choice. A quarter of our test will be formatted like this. So Forni's going to get ahead and start the process now. So we're really proud of their work, and that's ongoing. So then the other big topic is this idea of creating such a nice cohesive plan between onsite and virtual that kids are going to have the flexibility if they need to go out till they get, say, a test done. If they go out with just strep throat, kids get a lot of different illnesses. We have a system that can meet the needs of our at-home learners and our onsite learners that's high-quality, aligned to the TEES, preparing for a test that we don't have to worry about because it's aligned curriculum. And then we're building in assessments throughout so we can monitor and then provide interventions for our kids, no matter what the setting is. So consistent curriculum between both and a flex model that even allows our kids who are choosing to stay home to take certain courses and be with their peers for things like band and some of our CTE courses. So one other shout-out I wanted to give, Neil had done such a great job on his plan when he started to bring his athletes back. He got his in, and we were able to really use his information for both the sped department that had to work with kids throughout the summer and our fine arts programs that also have been working with kids, and they've brought them back also. So shout-out to his team. The real point is, we all have to work together to make this ship go. So do you have any questions? I'll turn it over to John.
So as you can imagine, this is a group effort for sure. And just as far as operations go, I know that we were out touring some facilities last week, and some of you may have noticed that we had some bottle fillers already out at some of the campuses. We've got another shipment of bottle fillers today, and I think the rest of our fillers are supposed to be here tomorrow. And they're going to be retrofitting all the water fountains in the district, or at least each water station, if they have two fountains next to each other. We'll have one bottle filler, and we're going to, you know, take the other water fountains and just disable them so kids aren't putting their hands and their mouths on the fountains. They'll have, be instructed to bring their own bottles hopefully to school, and they can fill their bottle with a touch- can fill their bottle with a touchless sensor. They can just hold it over the eye of that filler and fill up their bottle and get drinks of water that way. So, that's one of the things we're doing as far as helps be safe in the buildings. The other thing is, is we're going to have hand sanitizers in the classrooms for the kids to use, as well as our custodial team have these misters and they're like little guns that shoot out a mist at night. And so, all the hard surfaces are going to be misted with this Fire-X product, which is antivirus mist that will go on the desk. And when it dries, you know, it kills viral, any kind of virus activity that might be present there. So, anyway, so that's the kind of where we're at as far as building operations with custodial. And moving on to child nutrition, we just kind of started last week trying to finalize what that's going to look like. First of all, we're going to have breakfast grab-and-goes in kiosk as opposed to them going down to the cafeterias and picking up meals. So, they're going to be stationed kind of strategically inside the campus as the kids walk in. If they choose to get a meal, the cafeteria staff's going to be working with the principals where the best location for those to be. And the kids will pay, they'll have their point-of-sale system there where they can check out there, take it to the classroom and eat in the classroom. Same thing for lunch. We're going to have these kiosks that are going to be mobile, that we're going to have two options to start with. It'll be a reimbursable meal, plate lunch like, you know, you would serve in the hot lunch line. There's only going to be two choices of main entree available, and then the rest of it will just be prepackaged. Right now, that's, you know, the best we probably can do. I think as we get into this a little further after the first few weeks and kind of get the process down, it may be that we can add some à la carte items. I don't know what the, you know, right now, I can't say for sure, but that would be our goal is to be able to offer more choices in the future. But, right now, we're going to offer two choices at lunch, the kids that choose to buy lunch from the school cafeteria. And they'll be serving them classroom by classroom. And so, I think what will happen is, is that the kids that want to lunch out of that classroom will come out into the hall and we'll hit that classroom and then they'll move on to the next one. And so, at the high schools, I think they're going to have six actual carts that they'll be going through the classrooms wings and getting the service done, six classrooms at a time, both, you know, ABC lunch and work their way through it like that. So, hopefully, we can get through that pretty quickly. It's like anything, even first day of school, the productivity will probably be slower than it might be, you know, after the first week or so, but we'll get a process down and it'll go pretty smooth. I feel pretty confident about that. And then finally, the grab-and-go meals that we had this spring when we were on a school shutdown, we're still going to continue that for the kids that want to come up that are in a virtual setting and pick up a breakfast and a lunch. They're going to be packaged together like we did this spring. We're going to actually have the option for them to come pick it up at any campus. There's about a 30-minute window across each one of the campuses. And so, depending on when their start time, I think the intermediate schools actually start school first this year, and so they'll begin that grab-and-go process about 8:00 is our plan and would go to 8:30. And then it'll be kind of a rolling 30-minute block throughout the district. And so, at some point in the district, from either intermediate all the way to high school, there ought to be some availability for people to get meals for about an hour and a half in the morning. So, hopefully, that will help facilitate that. Again, you don't have to be going to Forney High School to go get a meal at Forney High School or any of the middle schools or intermediate or elementary. You can go to any location, it will be the plan, and pick up a meal if you so choose. They won't be free this fall like they were this spring. You know, our district doesn't have a high incidence of free and reduced lunch, kids that are on free and reduced lunch. And so, as a consequence, we can't just give meals out free without paying, you know, have them paid. We did do that this spring. We chose to do that at the district level. Anybody that came to pick up one could have it for free. But, you know, we had to pick up some of those at district expense, and so we can't really afford to do that forever. So, this fall, if the kids that are coming to pick up a grab-and-go meal will be scanned just like a kid in the classroom, and if they're free, they get it for free. If not, it'll charge their account. So, that's our plan for child nutrition and custodial. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I got one question. So, there are no eating lunches in lunchrooms at all on campuses?
That's the plan right now, yes, sir.
They all stay in whatever, either the classroom they're in or the next classroom they get lunch in?
That's the plan right now, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. That also provides us some large additional classroom space by utilizing a cafeteria in the case of needing to combine classes. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to our team. I know you guys, it's a long report, but there's a lot going on obviously, and I think you heard the theme, all hands on deck this year, and that's kind of the approach. And I'm just so appreciative of our principals and staff and teachers. They're about to get started into this, but also this crew that's been working all summer. So, thank you for your flexibility, your time listening to our reports, but also just want to say thank you for the patience of our community as a whole as we embark on something a little new for everybody.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the planning that's gone into this. As you can see, it may have seemed like you've been off since March, but I don't think anybody has, have they? So, a lot of extra work, so thank you very much for that. We're moving on then to 5F, master planning report. Ms. Morsak, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I'm just going to quickly run through the master planning report since we were able to give you guys tours last week. You've kind of seen the progress. Jeff's been on vacation, so I won't put him on the spot, and I'll just kind of run through where we are. You know, as always, I can't brag enough about Huckabee and Gallagher for all their hard work. As you know, we have a tremendously large number of projects going on this summer. So, as I said, I'll just quickly run through these. This building, as you can see, the front is moving along. Reception desk is installed. We're waiting on the boardroom, and starting Wednesday, they're going to come in and finish this up. It's going along perfectly, on track. Forney, I'm sorry, Claybon, the hub is complete. We did our first punch. They're running through the punch list. It looks awesome. The floors are done. The gymnasium's done. The paint is done. So, Claybon's pretty much buttoned up. Criswell, the paving project is completed. We're working on getting the iron fence installed and the iron gates. Irrigation landscape is completed. I think they're laying sod tomorrow. It looks phenomenal. The painting is almost complete. They started painting the front. I don't know if you've driven by, but the front looks really, really good. It's all on schedule, ready to be. The canopy is installed, so it looks awesome. Griffin Elementary, these pictures, you're going to have to tilt your head. I don't know why, but they came in crooked. We'll break ground on this this week officially, but the approaches have been poured, the gray beams are being poured, all the piers are in, the sidewalks back in on Raven Hill. So, as I said, you're going to have to tilt your head. It's a really pretty sky. It looked like it was a really nice day. But, Griffin's, it's going along perfectly, so we're good there. Jackson and Rhodes, we'll break ground on it this week as well. Somebody flew their drone over. You can see the whole site. Heath can share that link with you. They have a batch plan onsite, so they're pouring the roads and they're pouring them very, very quickly. Gray beam pours are going as scheduled. The rain's been really good, and so they've been able to keep up with everything. Some pictures here, there's a lot of pipe, a lot of drainage going out to the creek and all that's going in. I'm starting to talk like Vaughn. Ray Intermediate and Smith Intermediate, those are complete. We're waiting on the walls. Not sure that those will be in when school starts, but it's going to give us a really large space to get kids socially distanced if we need to. Floor's done, projectors are in, it's punched, it looks really, really good. Same thing with Smith. Forney High School, Citibank, Neil sent me like 100 pictures today. It looks really, really nice. The field looks great, the track looks great. As we said, we're going to add wireless to the gates and to Mr. Ferris's seat, and stadium is looking really good. That is punched and completed. Forney High School Culinary, waiting on a few punch list items. All the lights are in. It is complete, just waiting on a few very, very minor things. It's ready to go. It turned out beautiful. Forney High School's library, complete. Once again, we're waiting on lighting packages. As you know, those are coming from overseas, and we're struggling a little bit on lights, but other than lights, it's pretty buttoned up, looks really good. I think furniture got delivered today and should be installed the Friday before school, so that's right on track. Forney High School Welding Shop, as you know, it's all site work right now, dirt work. They're going to do a concrete pour, I think sometime this week if weather holds up, and we're going to get green easement for encore today, so power's going to go in. It's looking really good. Animal Science, they poured the slab on the hog pen. I think all the piers are in. They were prepping to pour the slab on Paws this week and on the cattle pens as well. It's kind of a lean-to in the back. It's all on schedule, so it's looking really good. North Forney, the pipe fence is in. It's mostly painted. There's, all the concrete's poured. There's some gates that have to go in, they're working on that. Cafeteria, I think some glass goes in this week, so it's on schedule as well, going really well. Here's cafeteria, the floor's done in there as you guys saw. Waiting on lights, I think there as well, but it's completely on track. And then, just some completed projects. The Johnson Elementary Lab, I don't even know if we ever really talked about that in here, but to give her a little bit more space, that was an old lab, classrooms back when that was an intermediate or middle school or whatever it's been in its past life. So, we just patched the floor and got them two big classrooms to help as they continue to grow. Brown paving project is done. It's striped, waiting on, I think, one sign there. Ray Will Stop's got put in. Warren is completely done. Forney High and North Forney marquees are in. So, that's it. That's all we've done this summer. Any questions on construction?
All righty.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Ms. Morsak. Moving on then to item number six, public forum. No one has signed in to speak there, so move on then to item seven, our consent agenda. 7A is approved minutes in the June 29th regular board meeting. 7B approved the T-Test appraisal and the T-Test appraisers for 2021. 7C approved budget amendment. 7D approved contract for Donahue Pizza. 7E approved the PCAP property and casualty. 7F approved the innovative courses for 2021. 7G approved the resolution amending authorized opportunities with tech pool. 7H approved secondary ELA resource purchase. 7I approved electricity easement for Forney High School construction. 7J approved the Region 10 purchasing. 7K approved the student code of contact. L approved the resolution delegating temporary purchasing contract authority to the superintendent. N, approve the MOU with Dallas College. And N approved the Brown Middle School temporary construction easement. The board may take action on each of these separately or collectively. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to the board to approve the consent agenda collectively.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you very much. Moving on to item eight, consideration and possible approval of the AIA with Huckabee Architects. Ms. Kim Morsak, Chief of Information Innovative and Technology Services and Construction Wizard.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Growth and development is what we call that. I have Gary Ridemaker here from Huckabee Architects if you guys have any questions. But, basically, the board has really put a lot of forethought into making sure we're ready to pull the trigger whenever we need to pull the trigger. As you know, our growth comes, and as soon as we can build, we build. And part of that is what you guys have set us up for, which is making sure every building is designed so that as soon as we're ready to construct it, we can construct it. And so, what we're asking tonight is to go ahead and approve an addendum to our AIA with Huckabee to begin design for the College and Career Center. As you know, that will be across from Jackson and Rhodes. And then the design for an athletic expansion at North Forney. Those are both things that the bond committee felt strongly that we needed to do. As you know, North Forney's was not built out all the way for their athletics and they're needing a little bit of expansion out there. So, we are asking that we approve an extension of the AIA for Huckabee for these two projects, design for these two projects.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morsak. Dr. Terry, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, sir. Just, I know we visited earlier this week and have shared a lot of information about these two projects with you. And as Ms. Morsak said, bond committee's recommendation, this is just aligning and taking off their recommendations. And also, just a reminder too that, you know, thanks to the work that we've done on those projects up there and the timing and the approach, we're sitting at over $70 million under budget. So, we do believe that at least the design component right now is ready for recommendation tonight, and we will continue to watch the current setting and enrollment. And when the trigger points are ready to fire, then we recommend construction on these as well. So, we do tonight recommend that we go ahead and begin the process for design for both of these two projects.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. Any other questions from the board? I hear none. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to amend the AIA with Huckabee Architects as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Regan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you very much. Moving on to item nine, consideration and possible approval of the TIPS proposal. Ms. Morsak?
I'm actually going to invite Jeff Fisher from Gallagher up to discuss these two projects.
The best part about coming up here and presenting tonight is I get to take this off for a minute. Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board, it's good to be with you again tonight, and I do appreciate Ms. Morsak taking the construction report because she knew a lot more about it than I did because I've been gone for a little while, so it's all good. Tonight, we're bringing to you two TIPS proposals for consideration. The first one is actually for the administration building renovations, and it's the traffic signal, signalization and the fencing. The reason that we're bringing this as a separate item and we didn't bring it before is because the traffic signals were still under design and review by Tech dot when we submitted the phases two through four proposals. And so, we were waiting to get that designed further down the road so we could get a more accurate price on it. And then the fencing is just to close off the staff parking and make it secure from the public areas with automatic gates and iron fencing, those kind of things. So, that total is 349,500. And then the second item is the Smith Intermediate Drive in the amount of 131,100. And what that is, is to allow buses to exit from Smith Intermediate School out the back of the property on the Beef Master Drive and come out to Falcon Way and then turn right to alleviate some of the congestion that happens up in the front of the school at the beginning and when schools let out. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on either one of those.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher, and welcome back to all this. So, we do, ask any questions from the board at this time? None. Dr. Terry, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. I recommend these two TIPS projects as presented this evening. These are not new projects, they're just bidded projects that we're finally getting pricing to you on.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make the motion to approve the TIPS proposal as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Moving on to item 10, consideration and possible approval of amended DOI plan. Ms. Morsak?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. So, the state has given us a little bit of grace. Normally, whenever you amend a DOI plan, you have to go back through the entire process. But, because of COVID, they have changed that a little bit for us, and so now, all that's required is a meeting of the DOI committee and then vote from the board. And so, we did meet, the DOI committee met two Tuesdays ago, I think, was the date, in ago, I think, was the date, in an emergency meeting to discuss two areas. We know that it's gonna be an interesting year, and we know that we need to have as much flexibility as we can. And so our DOI plan ends next December, so we're gonna have to have a whole new DOI plan at that point. So for the remainder of the plan, we would like to exempt out of two new areas. The first one is the class size waiver. As you know, we bring those to the board, and you approve them every time a class goes over the ratio, state ratio, and then the state goes ahead and puts that through. But we know that with our online classes, many of our elementary classes are gonna be over that 22 to 1 ratio. And it's okay, because it's a virtual environment, which having students in the virtual environment will allow us to have smaller numbers in the face-to-face environment and be able to space those students out a little bit more. So we're asking for a waiver of the class size waivers. The second one is duty-free lunch, and this is a big one. We know that our teachers need breaks, and we want to do everything we can to ensure that they get breaks during the day. But we also know that we're gonna have to eat in classrooms. So the principals are working to ensure that our teachers get more than just their 45-minute conference during the day, but they may have to eat in the classroom with their students. And so in order to do that, we need to temporarily waive for COVID the duty-free lunch period. Once we go back to normal, we'll go back to eating in the cafeteria again, and our teachers will go back to having their duty-free lunch. This is not something we're asking for, for a permanent solution. It's a temporary solution for, for a difficult situation. So the committee did vote unanimously for both of these waivers. I'll take any questions at this time.
Any questions from the board? I hear none. Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. And just a reminder to you, our, our microphone will help. Our DOI Committee is comprised of parents, teachers, and administrators, and we appreciated their work this summer on this plan. And I do recommend that we approve tonight the amended DOI to provide the flexibility needed to tackle this pretty uncertain, you know, times we're in right now in the school year that we're gonna have to be flexible with. So this is just a reminder, a temporary proposal for these. So we would propose that duty-free lunch definitely comes back in in the future, so.
Boards, you've heard the recommendations. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the amended DOI plans as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Dobbs, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to item 11, Was Consideration and Possible Approval of the Certified Tax Rule. Mr. John Chase?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As you know, this is the time of year that we start getting our certified taxable value from the chief appraisers office. Coffin County Tax Office goes to work and sends out the tax notices, and we set the tax rate so they can, they can complete that process. And so part of that process tonight, we have received our certified values from the chief appraiser. We got those on July 23rd. The amount that was certified was just shy of $5.5 billion. We still have 180, almost $5 million under protest at this point. So if you combine what was certified plus the amount that's still under protest, it's just north of $5.6 billion of value. And so when you look at this same point in time last year and compare total taxable value to what we have now versus what we had at certification then, it's about a 15.7% increase year over year. What we're certifying tonight is, or approving tonight is the actual certified, what's been certified at this point, which is, which is that 5.45 billion value. And that's, that's our recommendation that we accept this value and send the, send the acceptance to the tax assessor so they can begin, begin the process.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Is there a set date on the protest or resolve?
I think it's like the end of August, I believe. I'm not, I'm not 100% certain on that, but you know, at some point, whatever that, whatever that cutoff is, if they still can't come to agreement, then it goes into a lawsuit. And then they, I don't know sure how long, I guess they'd be at the mercy of the courts at that point if it goes to lawsuit. But, but I think, I think there's, there's some sort of cutoff point somewhere around the end of August, I think, as they try to get through all those, if my memory serves me correctly.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I hear none. Dr. Terry, your recommendation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I recommend tonight we approve the certified tax rule as presented.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make, I move to approve the certified tax rule as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Andrews, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Then moving on to item 12, Consideration and Possible Approval of the 2021 Proposed Tax Rate. Mr. Chase?
Just kinda, just give you a little background on the terminology before we get, get going into the, the heart of the proposal here. But in, in years past, we had, we calculated an effective tax rate and a rollback tax rate. And they've changed the terminology with the last legislative cycle, and those aren't gonna, going to be referred as that anymore. But, but to start off with, to calculate what used to be the rollback rate, which is now the voter approval rate, the TEA actually gives us what they call the maximum compressed rate. And they calculate that based on what our, what our property values end up being, being certified at. And we have to, we have to send that off to them at the end of July, and we got our, we got our compressed, maximum compression rate back from like the next day because it was all done online. They checked it and sent out, sent out their approval on that. And ours ended up being like, I think it was 82.47 is what our compressed, maximum compressed rate was. So then the no-new tax revenue rate, or that's what they used to refer to as the, the effective tax rate. And basically, it means it's the tax rate that would produce the same amount of revenue if applied to the same properties that were taxed in both years. And so they try to strip out new values and any, any, any value that was under protest and things of that nature to try to give an apples-to-apples comparison on, what, you know, what the no-new tax rate would be. And then, and then finally, that voter approval rate is what used to be the rollback rate, and that's what the maximum rate that we can levy without having a tax rate election. And so just to start with, you know, when we set our budget up back in, in June, we were operating under the assumption that our property values would be somewhere on an increase. I think it was 13.6%. And that was going to yield a, an MNO tax rate of 89 cents, and then we would add the 50 cents for our INS rate on top of that to arrive at that $139. Well, since our tax values actually came in at 15.7, our, our compression was, was even more than, than the, the 84 cents that we had projected that it was going to be back in June. And so now that that's come in, and we've gotten our maximum compressed rate back, our proposed tax rate that we're, that we're recommending for the board is now $137.47, which is a 9.5 cent reduction from the prior year of $147 that we had last year. So when you look at, look at that and you, and you just compare that on an average taxable residence year over year, so the average market value of a residence last year was $259,000, and that's taxable, you know. We still have the $25,000 homestead that comes off of that. And so, you know, that pushes the value up to, you know, over, over, over almost 280, I guess, or right at it. So when you compare that to what this year's taxable value is, is 271, again, that's stripping out the $25,000 homestead exemption and, and things. I think if there was an appraisal cap, you know, a 10% cap on that, and that's all going to figure out what the average taxable, or, excuse me, that's the market value. The taxable value is 235 versus 223. And so when you compare those two tax rates from the prior year of $147 and then $137 this year, and you, and you run, run the numbers all the way down, on an average home with us levying $137.47, it would be a $38, almost a $39 reduction this year on average. And so, again, our, our recommendation is, is that the board propose $137.47, which would be 87.47 on MNO and 50 cents on INS for a total tax rate of $137.47.
Well, when we have this kind of information to present, I'd like to take the liberty to just stop and talk about it for a second, if that's okay. Just to remind everyone, you know, we, we did share a lot of information with our community last fall when we were beginning to propose a bond referendum, and we were blessed to have our community support that and say resoundingly yes at 73%. One of the things we shared at that time was that this bond referendum would not increase our tax rate. And so I'm, I'm excited to be able to share this information with, with you tonight. These are some of the trigger points we need, obviously, when it comes to appraised values for continuing building facilities. But, but more than what we expected on the reduction of the tax rate itself at 9.5 cents. So very excited to be able to share that with you tonight and present a 9.5 cent decrease in taxes. But even more, sometimes that does not result in a complete, an actual lowering of taxes. And I think we all understand how that works. And in this case, and I appreciate John sharing this, just wanted to all, just reiterate that the average home in, in Forney now will actually have a reduced tax bill as well this year. So really excited about that, but also wanna just remind everybody that this is based on the compression that was put into House Bill 3. And so although we like to say, you know, we, we did all this, and as, but I think we need to continue to remind everyone and educate that this is based on House Bill 3 and some of the compression formula that comes into that. And they do set part of our MNO rate for the future. So just wanted to share those things with you, but at the same time say that we are proud to recommend tonight adopting or proposing a tax rate at $137, which is 9.5 cents less than previous year.
Thank you both for sharing that. And even though it would be caused by compression, it still is a reduction, so people should take note of that. That, that is a milestone for sure, as we talked about other milestones tonight. So you've heard this recommendation from administration. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the 2021 tax rate as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Green, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your work. Mr. Chase with that. Moving on then to item 13, will be closed session again. Before we do that, I know many of you will be departing as we are gone, so for principals and those others who were guests with us tonight as you leave, thank you for your hard work. Thank you for your participation tonight in our new protocols and mask and all those fun things. And please know, teachers and administrators, that our thoughts and prayers are with you with all the challenging opportunities that you get to face the next few weeks. And as you get your numbers this week, may the force be with you, so. Anyway, at this time, we'll move on then to item 13. Like I said, back into closed session. It is now 8:22 PM, 8:32 PM, and we'll move into closed session. Text the government code 551074, 551082, 5510821. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, everyone. It is now 10 o'clock PM. We will resume back into open session. We'll move on to item 14, Consideration and Possible Approval of Professional Contract Personnel. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to approve the contract personnel as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Regan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on then to item 15, Consideration and Possible Approval Regarding the Ratification Employment of Professional Contract Personnel, as discussed in closed session. May I have a motion for that one?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to approve the professional contract personnel as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Andrews, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to 16, Consideration and Possible Approval Regarding the Semiannual Superintendent's Evaluation. And there's no action taken on this tonight. Then moving on to 17, Consideration and Possible Action Regarding the Level 3 FNG Parent Complaint as discussed in closed session. May I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move that the level 3 appeal of the FNG parent complaint be denied.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Green is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. So Mr. Johnson, Ms. Green, all in favor, said aye. And then our notes here, Dr. Terry, if you would please forward that on to the families and share the thoughts and the next steps in that process. We appreciate it.
Yes.
Moving on to item 18, Thursday, the 6th, at 8:30 AM, Groundbreaking for Jerry and Helen Griffin Elementary. I hope all you can be there. I believe the entrance, the closest way to get there is going up Ranch Road and going that back way. Is that, any special instructions we need?
No, there, parking will be on the street. Obviously, there's nothing, and that's not a fire lane. And so just find a good place to park, and then there'll be a, you'll, you'll see the tent when you arrive.
Look for the tent. Then on Friday, the 7th, at 8:30 AM, with groundbreaking with Tony Jackson Middle School and Timothy Rhodes Intermediate School. And that entrance will be across from Estate off of 740 on that side.
Off of 740, yes, sir.
Okay, so look for the tent and follow the signage there. Then Monday, August 17th, is first day of school, and August 31st is our next regular board meeting. It is now 10:03 PM, and I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.